In the meeting of the Middleton Planning Board, 606, called order, which I just did. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, I propose to change the agenda as follows. Let me know when you're there.
I'm just trying to find the agenda.
You got an agenda?
No, we're fine. That's fine.
Okay. Item eight, preliminary conception review, gonna move to item four, under the roll call. Oh, I didn't do roll call. Roll call, please.
Christine Maynard here.
John Long here.
Roxanne, it's not Stephen here.
John Quinn's here. Kate's here.
Alterner.
The alternate is here, but it's not right here right now.
Okay. So I'm gonna move the preliminary conception, yeah, conception review to item four. Okay? And then I will change item four to five. Then we'll do the hearing, open the hearings on zoning ordinances, and we will open the hearing on driveway regs. Okay, all right. So, who's going first here? You are.
You flip it, yeah.
I'd like to get a double permit on my property, 440 Jones Road, so put a house on the same compound.
On the family compound?
Yes.
I'm gonna talk to that guy.
All right.
Well, just-
I'll have to commission from you first.
Yep.
Right, so just wanna make sure that you understand what entails a family compound, because we will be coming for you, coming to get some information from you, Lenny, and an affidavit saying that the people who are living in the house are not paying any rent, you know, a relative of yours. Because that's one of the-
That's one of the things that happened.
Yes, so we need to make sure that that is covered, so that would be the same as well for you, Charlie.
Yeah, I got four children.
No, no, but I'm just saying that, because it's-
So just make sure you stay on the same with property.
In all structures.
Right, what the purpose, the intent of what the family compound is supposed to be, you know, the intent of what, why it's there.
All my family being like, oh, slide, I love them all.
And it does say in here that shared driveway serving all dwellings is allowed. So technically, it would only be one driveway, and at some point in time, if you were able to subdivide it, if they were on their own, like, had to have here, they could have a separate driveway, but the intent is for one driveway per lot.
But they make it a road, if for some reason they don't make another driveway, can it be like a private road? I'm just wondering, like, just make it easy instead of making it a new driveway.
But eventually, we have to turn into a driveway.
Well, it would be a driveway, I guess, when you-
Well, I mean, it's gonna go up high, it becomes a private road, multiple houses off the same driveway. I don't know if that's-
Well-
Just put it off, just throw it out.
Well, I mean, the shop apartment is here, I wouldn't think he would have like this, we'd have been missing him. I think it's just an extension, the way he had it said.
No, I get it. I mean, if he wants an alley road or something.
Well, sure, but we didn't, we don't make any-
All again.
No, no, private road, I'm just saying, exactly, you have to own it, I'm just saying, if it comes to that, might as well come. And that lot right there is one of my old six on the acre, so down the road is not an issue.
I would just also make sure that, you know, when you do build, that you build it so, if you want to subdivide it-
You can't subdivide.
Or, well, if they, oh.
You can't once it becomes a family compound, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, that's odd.
Isn't that right?
Well, I thought that it said that you should build it with an "I" to having it-
Right.
In case you decide.
I thought, okay.
Yeah, that's what I know. I could have misinterpreted that.
The way I read it was, yeah, I think the way I read it was kind of basically, you know, you think about now, but then you think about in the future, if something happens and, you know-
You can't divide.
One, yeah, you make sure that you go according to what our zoning is.
Because it says in here, a family compound which ceases to be used solely for family may become subject to enforcement action in order to be in compliance with zoning ordinance. So, local planning is encouraged. So, the question here, see though, Charlie, what it's saying is, you have the 26, you said 21 acres?
21.
21 acres. And the way you have it laid out here is they each all be on five acres. Now, you have to understand, though, because this has come to our attention in the past here, is-
Wetlands.
Right, you have to know, you have to have five acres of buildable. So if there's any wetlands in there, that doesn't get counted towards you.
If not, on that road.
Well, that's what you said.
Well, I did a wetland map.
No, I'm just saying.
It would say on the deed it was wetlands.
No, Kate, Kate down here is our wetlands, that's her, so all the wetlands is not, but I, because you've got the big garden brick over to your left, and down at the bottom of your driveway, there's water that goes across the road, but I think there's any wetlands on your property.
That's where the river is literally within 20 feet of the road.
So, what we're doing, what we're cautioning you, Charlie, what we're cautioning you.
Yep.
If in the future, your family situation changes, as it says in here, and you want to subdivide those into three lots, you are going to have to get, I would say from the planning board, a professional opinion of where the wetlands are.
Well, they'll have to have it surveyed, so.
So you'd have to have a survey.
You'd have to have it surveyed and-
When you split it. Now, your family situation may not change for 20 years, but down the road. Yes, Carl?
I'm already gonna be surveyed.
What's that?
I'm gonna need a survey for the building you want.
Correct.
So there should be some sort of delineation of the survey line.
Correct. Also, how do you end up in septic? Two more septic systems, or all at the time, or one big septic system?
No, it'll be anything.
In two bedroom places?
Yes.
It could change, but not just us.
Yeah, well, that's what the intention is.
You have to, obviously, you have to state approved.
We know that.
I'm just saying, Lenny, that's the, you know, we all-
They can't eat the law, I mean, a lot of month and everything.
I'm saying, hey, when that happens.
Well, I'm on a lottery now.
Okay. Now, you understand that we do have a proposal here to rescind that entire article altogether?
Yes.
That doesn't preclude you from doing that.
But if he gets approved as a family compound, he's exempt from the, you see, the-
Right, that's why we're here.
Uh, it's fine, doesn't mean we're excluding, we're eliminating all of it.
But just because you're here today, it doesn't mean that you still have to apply for the building permit and go through the whole process.
Right, I understand, and you do the whole thing all.
Right, so if we, you know, so if we approve it as a family compound tonight, we don't expect six months down the road, you, because you expect this process to be, I don't know, like, this happens, then you apply for the building permit, and you move forward in that way. Not to say, oh, I'm trying to get in before the vote, you know, before-
Well, that hurt. Better to get it before we rescind it than afterwards.
But I suspect, I suspect, though, a building permit is only good for a year. Correct, Carl?
Yep.
Right, so I would say that our condition for a family, the family compound, issuing a family compound, is that a building would have to be started, you're built from the-
Question, if you already have a building permit, say you're gonna finish it, and you just get a building permit?
Right, but you were, in that spot, you said you started it. But getting a building permit and not doing any work doesn't-
Oh, no.
That's what I'm saying.
You can always get an extension.
Yeah.
Right, but I'm just saying-
Because it took me two years to prove it.
Or us approving it today, and then not getting a building permit for eight months, because of whatever reason. It's, I mean, I think if you're gonna do this and you're in tend to do this, then-
It needs to be in a timely, timely, timely batch.
Yes.
Do you have building plans?
Yes, this is, whatever, 36 by 40.
No, no, do you have, do you have plans to submit to the CO before it's been offered in terms of the structure?
Right. No, no, the guy who helped with septic design-
No, no, the building itself, the structure. You don't have any- No, no, you don't have any, you don't know how big the walls are, how thick the walls are, what the foundation is gonna be, what the pitch of the roof's gonna be, but you don't have that.
You also put it like, like, all that, the question and all that, get all that.
So you don't have all the information ready to fill at the application?
So I guess the question, I guess my question would be, yeah, how soon would you expect to be filling out the building application? Charlie, not you, Lenny, Charlie.
Before the end of the week.
Okay, no, so that's, that's what we're looking for, we don't wanna get, you know, we're not saying, you know, like, oh, June. So you're, so you're, okay, that, okay, I'm good with that, I'm the same.
We still wanna put you in a bad position.
Do we want a letter, also requiring a letter of-
The intent, yeah, so it would be, we would want something in writing, intent stating that you, you know, this is a family compound, and that you understand what the Article 23 in the zoning ordinance is, what constitutes a family compound.
Are you the single owner on the deed?
Yes, well, me, I bought it, I own it, and the wife is on it.
She's a co-owner?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
By marriage.
Okay, as long as she's on the deed, then, okay.
And then he would have to be on the deed for the other one or two houses, correct?
Yeah.
Remember, Mary just legally got a divorce.
Well, that's another, that's another, that's, that just, no pun intended here, compounds, the reason for family compounds being, not a good thing all the way around. I understand why you're doing it, I get it. But I can tell you from our experience here, not having surveys of property causes you problems down the road. It will. Yes, Carl?
So as far as the building permit part, if I can't process a permit without a septic design?
Okay.
So if I can't give a permit, so, so septic design is after being placed, stated through-
So a building permit has to be issued?
Before a building permit can be issued.
No, septic design is, and when is that gonna happen, Charlie?
I guess I'll get on it.
Right, I mean, because I'm gonna say, from the board's perspective, we should have a deadline date too.
I don't know how good the state is at the moment, but they were a good month, and I'm with the board.
No, I would say, you need to have a septic design by the end of April.
April.
Is everybody fine with that? I'm just trying to make sure.
I mean, I got my septic design and everything approved within, like, less than a week, but, I mean, if you're saying that there-
So if we say, so if we say, wait a minute.
Sometimes it's a week, sometimes it's a month out.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute, one at a time.
What if we say, we would like to have a septic design by the March meeting, the March Planning Board meeting?
Can they do that, so, yeah, can we work tests and stuff like that?
No, no, no.
So that would be-
Wait a minute.
So that would be March 13th, and you can tell us, Charlie, at that point in time, yes, I've got it in the works, or here it is. So you, you know, and then we can say, okay, and then from there, if that happens, then we'll move forward with it, and then you can, you know, that your building permit can be issued. Does everybody agree with that?
What, what is that incorrect to, to have a perk test it, to be able to make sure that the lot, that perks in the area?
But does it have part of the septic? They can't do it when-
Like, it's frozen.
Oh.
Yeah, there's no problem, I know, it's only a question.
I'm just saying, it's a possibility.
So, I think-
People shouldn't have that problem around here.
Right.
So, let me understand, you can't issue a building permit?
Until the state tells me that they have a state-approved septic design.
Okay, and we're saying that, what are we saying about approving this? We're approving it now?
We're approving it with the contingency that he will have a septic design.
And a building permit?
Well, he, well, he has to have a septic design to get the building permit, yes.
The other way around, they, they want to be able to have a permit.
Yes, right, so we're saying that, yes.
The state will give you a permit for a septic, with a zero building.
So not finished, they'll give you a permit to install, not-
Correct.
Not finished, like you said.
A good sign.
Right.
To install, not install, to install.
To install.
And then you can, then you can, then you can issue a building-
Then I can issue a permit.
With the blueprint.
Okay.
And you know what, now that you bring up the whole, if a perk test is needed, just because I spoke with somebody who's looking to buy land in my area, it can't, they won't do it in the wintertime.
Well, no, so that's why, so we can push that back to April 30th, which is not winter anymore.
No.
Or actually, why don't we, actually, let's go with the April meeting?
Yeah, I think April meeting.
So if we go to April 10th?
Good, that won't be it. No, no.
So, so the idea is, Charlie, that you come back, April 10th, you have a septic design, or that process started. If not, then-
Family compound is rescinded.
Then the family compound is rescinded, you know, the granting of family compound.
Even if the new ordinance is passed, you would, because we are approving it conditionally, with the condition that if those actions aren't completed by that date, then the family compound designation will be rescinded.
Right, so I'll make the motion that Charlie needs to, by the, come to the April-
April 10th.
April 10th, 2025 meeting, with a septic design process in place in order to-
In the letter?
In the letter stating the intent of a family compound, to be able to move forward.
One more time, sorry, letter saying he understands the intent?
The intent, yes, the intent that he's kinda have a family compound, and he understands the provisions of the family compound.
And what about, okay, you have to worry about tenants right now, right?
No, correct, right now, he's working on it.
Because he'll state that in the letter of intent, that he understands, because that's part of the-
Right, he understands that, yes, I mean, and part of it is, is, you know, we can provide him the pages of what the family compound consists of, and say he understands, and attach that to the letter, so. So did I miss anything on that?
That was actually-
No, that was true, I'll second it.
My 15 ones.
We can pick one.
All right, hand you this, over that. Madam Clerk, did you get all that? Did you get all?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
No?
Roll call.
Christine Maynard?
No, I.
Oh, I, hello. I agree.
Yes, I.
I. Okay, you got some work ahead.
That was funny. You're a good child, if you have any questions, ask her on the, she was really good at that, so. But don't worry, she knows where to find me, I'm in the building, at least daily, so.
Yeah, that's why they're here.
Right.
Good luck, have fun building.
All right, so we good, and I got my stuff done, and off we go.
Yes, you did your stuff done, we'll give you, we'll give you the whole blessing, and move forward.
And good luck.
I don't wanna see 50,000 residents coming in here with a family compound.
With all kinds of kids. All kinds, they could be homeschooled, look at it, yeah.
Right, we're not going down that path.
They could stagger family compound school, you know?
Okay.
Next item.
Next item. You have something?
Yeah, I have a building permit.
For what?
For my family compound, I'll put another house up.
Can you go planning board?
I'm right here.
How many houses do you have on there now?
Do you have the first septic? Is that what this is? Carl, is this in the first septic?
I have no idea what that is.
No, this is Carl. So is this the third septic system you have? And it's approved?
So on the property, there's two houses now.
How old is that septic design?
I don't know, Carl, that's for Carl to figure out.
198.
All right, I'm counting both.
What's the date of that? 1983?
Eight, eight, 24.
Eight, 24, oh, obviously.
Eight, eight, nine.
How long does septic design-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, ask a question, it's not the one that you already put in, you know?
No, that was another one.
I want, so I guess Mom's gonna ask one.
I have two.
I want to see, you have two systems or one?
My original house, is that, oh, by the way, is the original house considered a family compound?
Yes, it is, three.
Sorry, you can't get four.
No, I'm just asking, because I can't charge myself rent?
If you wanna put four on there-
No, I can't charge family members for rent on the other two houses.
You can't charge them for rent.
You can't charge yourself rent, Lenny, come on.
Well, the original house that was up there.
No, wait, I'm, my-
Can I charge rent from the original house?
No, no, it's a family compound, you can't charge rent.
So I'm charging myself nothing?
That's correct.
You're not charging yourself, you should do it through your LLC, so.
That's a state law, state law.
The IRS might come in and do that.
I'm, I'm, I, the IRS is most curious.
So question, this is a question, so this is for the third septic, uh, Lenny? This is a third septic?
No, this is my second one that you got.
So you're gonna pull off the sep, you're gonna pull off the same septic?
Yeah.
I know, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
How many beds is that house? How many, how many beds is the new house? How many bed is the new house in here, one? So that's a lot of that's coming out of the office.
Okay.
So that's allowable.
So you're gonna have, I just, so I want everybody to clear, yeah, two septic.
I'm having, I'm having two houses, all separate, and five on up, so when everybody dies off, I can have two eight the lots.
Very good.
Well, not in us, not in us.
I wanna go for my various, because they told me 20 years ago I could go for my various.
Things change.
Yeah, people change.
No, well, I mean, that's why we have the lakefront property, those things are-
Yeah, two separate, five acres.
So, okay, so you're gonna have the one septic, pull off, two houses pull off of the septic, so we're good there. Correct? Correct, Carl, is that fine?
I'm sorry, I was on the other.
So, we're gonna, two houses pull off this one septic, the new one?
That's what it sounds like you said, yes.
Okay.
Two houses will pull off one septic.
And that's on a plan dated 8/24.
Eight, 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 24. That's the, that's the, that's the one that you just got done, that you just got done.
And it will, and it's fine for-
It's sufficient gallons for four bed.
Okay, okay.
What map and lot is it?
It probably says on it, it doesn't actually have it.
It's on that map.
Oh, what map?
How, Carl, how long do septic designs last for now, is it one year or two years?
Four.
I'm not sure, but you want me to pull it off of the septic, and we can tee into a septic tank. So that's, they're different. So you can tee into a septic tank for 80 years.
Lenny is now 11.
Oh, but if you have a septic design-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
We have too many conversations, what's the number?
Eleven, well, 120.
Thank you.
This is on acid furor, or is it seven?
Pheasant, Pheasant or something?
Oh, one of them, Stevens House, yeah.
Right, so, so we're gonna, so we're going to address, officially address another issue with this. One driveway, one address.
Here's a question.
One driveway, one-
I put my original house up on Drew Drive.
Right.
When I went to get my mailbox, mailbox lady said, no, I'm gonna put it on Pheasant.
Well, that's, we, we try to-
So I put it on Pheasant, so now when they put the other house up on the thing, I am 11 giving it a 911, they gave that a separate address.
We're gonna circle back with Rob.
Yeah, this is the one driveway.
I know you originally got-
I had two driveway permits for that.
Right, you got two driveway permits, you should know that.
Well, I was doing what I was told.
Right, at the time, so, we understand that, but going forward, one driveway, because I hear you put in for another, for a fourth driveway permit, attempting to, that's not gonna happen.
That's what I, I was asking the town what they wanted, I was asking the road agent what he would like, because I can drive right down the original one, and I can branch off, that's not far.
But that's just opposed to-
And that's the intent.
That's the intent.
Right, but if I screwed out one way, or screwed out that way, not a driveway, it's an access road, whatever. And it's already this, I already got the building permit for 109, and I got the building permit for 113.
No, so we, this is a part of, so we're going to rectify this.
Oh, so you're gonna change it, take it away from me after I put it in?
We're gonna rectify this with that, that one address, because that is a family compound, one address. So we could be, I don't know what you have, so it could be 51 Drew, so it'd be 51 A, B, and C, because it's all on one lot.
And that's what I thought, until the town told me, no, no, that's 109.
No, we're gonna circle back, Robin, and-
It's all on the paperwork, so how can you take something-
Just a minute, just a minute.
The first address was before I started, it was 1, 13, right?
113, yeah.
You were assigned 113.
And, and on what road?
I got a driveway permit, and E911 assigned 109. The problem was, he should never have gotten a second driveway.
Right.
So the state screwed out, not me?
No, not the state.
Which, which, okay, wait a minute, what are we, which lots are we talking about? We're talking about the family compound?
It's one lot, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, so that, that address, that lot needs to be one address.
It should be one address, yes.
So we need to go about correcting that.
Where do you want the mailbox?
Can I ask something?
Sure.
What does the tax card say?
It has buildings on it, but it's one lot.
And, but the tax should have an address, right, but, and you don't-
That's the problem, we can make the address even wrong. I think it has them like, put together, if I remember right, it was like two.
Right, it should only be one add, it should only be-
This is on the tax card. But should it be Drew Drive or Pheasant Drive?
Which one do you want?
Which one is the driveway then?
Both.
Which one is the driveway that could bear off to all the houses?
Original house up to be Drew Drive.
So, which, which, which driveway do you wanna come in off of? Because that's the one that you're gonna use the other-
I wanna use the helicopter, man.
Which one do you wanna use?
I wish I had a helicopter.
Well, because the other house is there, I have to use the bottom one.
One driveway.
Which, which driveway is there?
Which road do you want it on?
Do I draw or pheasant, is it Drew or Pheasant, or I have to write?
Why are you taking it away, who's gonna be paying me for all the land I, trees I took down, put driveways in, when you died, told me to put driveway there? Your road agent told me to put driveway there, he even put the culvert, whoever even put the culvert there. Who's paying me back for the culverts and all the trees I took down, where you said I had to put those driveways there?
See, this is the problem, wait a, this is the problem with the family compound. I'm sure Dan didn't know it was a family compound, and it's only supposed to have one driveway, because it's not, and there's no procedure or process for it anyway. But Dan, Dan probably just assumed it was another lot.
Right.
Because it cost you $1,000 to put, I said, not three.
If, if the road agent put two driveways in-
But I understand you've got three driveways.
No, there's only two right now.
One off of Pheasant?
One up at Drew.
One up Drew.
And one up at Pheasant.
But you can only have one address, so where do you want your address, Drew or Pheasant?
I wanted it Drew, but the post office wouldn't allow me.
I don't think the post office allows it.
Anything to do with-
Because the post office is only gonna deliver to where there's an address.
She told me, I said, this is a perfect idea, because you got a 30-foot wide driveway, you can pull off the road.
Lenny, is that Linda? I'll talk to Linda.
Can you hold the one?
Yeah.
It wasn't, it doesn't-
Now, here's who you talked to on that, or we talked to, it's not Linda.
But this has already been there three years, why are you taking it away now?
Okay, you talked to the postmaster, okay? What I'm going to is, if you were given a driveway permit in error, okay? Not your fault, okay, for both roads, you're still gonna, we're still gonna require one mailbox, okay?
Right, or one setting.
One setting. The post office has nothing to do where it's placed, or the number, right?
Right, it's either E911 or the town.
Or the town. So, your mailboxes, do you have one mailbox, or two?
I have, I have two.
Well, right, and you have two in the same, so they would be at the same spot, and be like A and B.
Yeah.
Like 110 A, 110 B.
Just like if it was like a two-family house.
Well, so 109 and 113, that 911 gave you no good?
We're gonna, yes, because we're going to-
Because I remember you said to me, who gave you those numbers? You can't just make numbers out of the air.
So we're gonna, we're going to go back and correct that with 911, to say, it's one lot, one address.
And see, they, they don't know it either, they didn't know if it was a family compound, if it was a family, and one-
Right, so that's what we need to, we need to educate them, to say, it's one lot.
If there was a fire, it'd be on the houses.
You can, you can-
Well, that was an idea.
Well, you can get, but you can get to it in the one driveway, right?
But they don't know which house is which.
Well, they're gonna see the flames.
Yes.
I mean, because-
Don't try to guide me around it, you're gonna see the flames.
Oh, my gosh, so we, on our end, we will get a, a good address.
All right, before we-
So what do I do about my driveway?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Before we do anything, can we get this straightened out?
Yes, that's what I'm talking-
Before we make a decision on any, we should figure out what the correct address should be.
The address, maybe not a lot of it is based on where the driveway is, so they base 109 for one driveway, and 113 for nothing else. So that's, I mean, because if it's an emergency, they wanna know where to go.
I understand that, but it's one lot, that's what I say to them, it's one lot.
So I guess ultimately, what would need to be done is, we would have to say to you, you need to pick a driveway, because there's on two different roads, pick the drive right?
Of where your mailbox is.
Because if one's on Drew and one's on Partridge?
Well, if you drive one-
Does it, does it, oh, let me, let me answer the question.
Okay, go ahead.
Does it matter in terms of, he's got two driveways, does it matter where the mailboxes are, whether they're 113 or 109, in, in the, on the family compound situation?
It just has to all be all in one.
But, but the question is, when you, your, when you tax, your tax map and your lot, what is the address you- But, but the question is, when you, your, your, when you tax, your tax map and your law, what is the address used for that?
It would be.
Which one do you pick?
That's a good one.
Because where does the tax bill go?
Right.
Right? Because I, I'm assuming that the tax bill for both of the houses is one, right? Because it's on that lot.
On address, right now it says one thirteen.
So then it would be the one thirteen.
Well.
Cause that was the first.
I would.
And that says two structure.
So it's one thirteen.
So, when the third structure is built, it'll be three structures.
Correct.
And then it would just be.
But he will have a different address, mailing address, mailing address, not a tax address.
Right.
Right?
Two different, they got.
Two different, for mail delivery only, not on the tax map. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
So can you, in your travels, I know you don't have a lot to do. Can you find out from the nine eleven idiots up there in Concord? Excuse me, strike that.
Yeah.
Uh, uh.
Well, they only did what we asked them to do.
I, I, I get that.
We need a driveway permit, we need an address.
Okay, so, for the terms of meeting the family compound criteria that we have in here, you have to have one.
I didn't read that, Matt.
Well, it says, what does it say, one driveway, is that what it says in here?
Shared driveway serving all.
Shared driveway, okay, so you have a shared driveway, one is going on one road and one's going on the other road, right?
No, same road.
Huh?
Same road.
Same road, same driveway on the property, right? No, they don't link up. Right?
Well, no, because that one's on Drew and one is on.
So, I go back, I go, I go back to the, from a tax purposes.
The, the, with a lot shape.
Yep.
Say they have nine hundred feet on Pecan and nine hundred feet on Drew and loops around.
Okay.
The house is on Drew Drive side. But they wanted to use Pecan for the address. So, there's an entrance to get to the house on Drew Drive.
Alright, we're gonna.
And if you go down Pecan, there's an entrance to get the, the one thirteen up into the lot, up to the house. There is a, a long driveway to get up into that.
So, alright, so.
Give me a try, could you?
No, wait, so wait a minute, just let me ask this question. What you're looking for tonight is just to get another building permit for the family, the third final building permit for your family compound, because you're only allowed three.
Right, I want you to be put a big block into it.
And we are going to, the idea is, that house will be able to get to by either one of those, one of those driveways that you have here. Okay, then we are going to.
How, the build, the road agent, how, no.
Dan.
Dan, he came up today and he says, I don't really want you to go through there and head for the woods, he goes, you come off Drew Drive.
But he, I don't think he realized.
So you're not, but right now, we're gonna hit, there's no more, there's no more driveway permits given to going, to go on that property. We already have two, you're gonna have to use one of them. But, so we will work on with Robin about a single address for the tax map, the lot.
Got the two driveways along.
And, and address.
Question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have to do anything today because I, my grandfathering later if you change the law.
There's no grandfathering.
We need, we need what, we need what grandfathering for what?
Well, I heard you guys getting, you're gonna get rid of the family.
Now, if, make sure you get that letter as soon as you can, okay? You, you've stated in other meetings it's a family compound, so you have stated that it's a family. So, you would become what, what do you call it?
Grandfather.
No, 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 not grandfather.
Oh, fire, an existing condition.
Uh, a nonconform, you would be, once, if, if, family compound ordinance is rescinded, then your lot would be a nonconforming lot, which would mean it's okay. And your criteria for the family compound would carry forward.
Yeah.
Wouldn't change.
But you would still have to follow.
You would still have to.
Oh, no, I still.
No, no, but I mean, even though it's no longer allowed, you're still complying to the, uh, you're still complying to the standards that are set.
The bottom one, they need to have one driveway with one address.
Well, you've got two.
So what you're here for tonight is primarily to get the building permit for the third building, correct? Alright, so with that said, what we're looking for is to get that, we would like a letter stating that you have a family compound, you understand the regulations.
They have to go on the last one.
I, well, we would like again, and I hope that still we know that we got down the last building permit when you submit for the second one.
The mailing standpoint, you say, we can change that.
I've never seen any documentation of any something as a family compound.
Right, so, right, I know we never got anything from you, other than you came into a meeting and it's admitted.
One thirteen.
So what we're, like what we're asking from Charlie is.
What are you taking away from the way that way?
Postmaster, don't know.
All we're saying is we wanna get that property to be one and one address.
The address would be the mailbox and the driveway.
So this, you can't come back down the road and say, well, wait a minute.
Can I help him write something?
Yes.
If that's Pecan, that would have to say Pecan.
Right.
She would have to understand.
We.
Right, so both you Charlie and Lenny to use, correct?
We can shut it down.
Yes, so see, she's a traitor of ice, why couldn't she just want?
Everything should be.
All nine of them?
Whatever, or, or Pecan, one two, or.
Whoever died off.
The person say they have all the mailboxes here, how do I, this is the Pecan, but you can still keep that notice.
Oh, yeah, so, so for time purposes.
Then I gotta walk all the way up here to get to that.
You will get your building permit as soon as Robin comes up with the thing that she wants.
I'll write by you to make sure the verbiage.
And we want, just attach the stuff from, onto it. But you'll both, no, but you'll both, so we'll have a copy for you and a copy for us that you signed it. And then we will follow up on the driveway, no more driveway permits, and we will let you know which address to use, so you will have.
Well, most likely it'd be one thirteen.
Three mailboxes for A, B, and C, one, one, two, three, E, F, G, I don't care.
That's what they, that's what a place does down.
I said that when I first started doing this, A, B, and C, and she came up with the one oh nine, and I'm like, where the hell that come from?
Who come?
Nine one one. It was because, because they didn't understand what the intent of the property was at the time, it, we were all new.
So can I use those driveways, where are they, culvert ten and all that, and still go with the mailbox?
You're only using two, we, I, I'm thinking, yes, what he said, yes.
So you use driveways, you're already built them.
Yes.
Well, that's why I'm asking, you're all that money there.
But I understood that you put in for a third permit, driveway permit.
For the, for the, for the last one.
But it's not gonna happen.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so, and then what we're gonna do is come back and say we are, the mailboxes need to be the three mailboxes, and that way then it's all uniform.
I put them all together right on the second driveway.
Well, we're gonna let Robin.
It would be wherever the address is, so if it's.
It's all the same lot, doesn't matter where I put it, the first driveway, the second driveway is.
But, but, but we'll also clear it with, with the postmaster, not, not the carrier. I love Linda.
Well, no, whatever, she told me, I was pissed, I was, I was pissed because I made it nice up there, it could be easier, nice and flat, not down a hill on my corner, she wanted it down a hill on my corner.
That's not her call.
So, Robin is driving this and will let tell us, and so don't move anything until we get an order, okay?
Till we get to you, Robin, you got it, it's in your court.
That's fine.
Okay, so, I'll make the motion that we, uh, we go ahead and give, have Carl issue Lenny, Lanson, a third building permit for his family compound. And, um, is, with the condition that he gets the paperwork signed that Robin's gonna put together, that states the property is a family compound and the provisions that they fall under.
And do we want a deadline for that?
That's a deadline on, don't put that, that's a deadline on Robin, she's the one that's putting together.
That's me.
I, and I.
You gonna be signing right now?
No, she didn't have it written.
You can fill out the rest later on.
This is the problem. So, so she will call you, she will contact both of you when it's ready, right, Robin?
Is that how you wanted it to go? Is that how you wanted it to go? Yeah, no, that's fine, and probably within two weeks.
So, Carl.
So I, I'd like to, if we could just wait until that sort of.
Yes, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's not gonna happen until.
So, so why don't we not make it, not even approve it, just table it until we receive those things?
Well, it's a, the building permit, well, the motion is do not, we'll go forward with accepting, accepting having the third house on the family compound. Contingent on getting the.
Uh, mailbox address straightened out, correct?
And, um, the signed paperwork.
More they want me to sign a paper saying, I acknowledge it's a family compound, doesn't really care about mailbox.
Well, we care about all of it, because it's, it's going according to what the order says.
It's only getting.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't say you have to name it as a family compound.
But that's why, that's why I want the, the pages of the family compound attached to what you're signing, so that you understand you have to comply by these.
I think the other, well, I said the other compound.
But, so, so, so as soon as Robin does her part, you can get, you can get.
I just want it to be sorted out, that's all.
You need to work on yourself. You need to work on the plumbing, Charlie.
Yeah.
Are we good, we all, are we all, oh, so that's my motion, somebody wants to?
I'll second it.
Carl, I thought it said that, I thought it said that too about it has to be in the D, and I read it four or five times.
You guys have talked about it, like, I mean, a couple of years ago?
Yeah, I thought it was, and it's not, it's in section B, items three, paragraph three.
It mentions the D, but that's.
Mentions the D, but it doesn't mention anything about, has to be mentioned as a family compound.
Could it be, but I was just going about.
No, no, you're right, cause I was, I, I read it real quick, oh, it's gotta be in the D, no.
Another thing we mentioned too about, like, uh, Charles property, um, is the driveways, not for the family compound aspect of it, but it talks about driveways and how wide they have to be versus the length. So you wanna make sure you check if you're, if you're just doing one long driveway, to get up there, if it's like a hundred something feet, driveway has to be, have at least.
Oh, so why?
So fire equipment can get up there.
Did you see that?
My driveway is more godlike, why?
So, this is what he.
Little bit, clean it all, all nice.
It's the, it's the.
I used to try to trail the truck through there, turn it around.
I think, I think the comment is, you know, that there are driveway regulations, rules that you have to comply to.
Yes.
That's it.
Well, I'm really able to like it.
And I just wanna point out, when, when we're bringing up all of this up, we're not trying to be like lecturing or anything, we're just trying to make sure that everything's being followed accordingly. And things in the past may not have gone smoothly, but it's like moving forward, it's like doing.
It's not only in the town's press interest, but it's in your press interest as well.
Oh, we got on that one, I know.
Okay, what's next, go ahead, get in the chair.
Make it short, because we have a lot to do here, but go ahead.
Oh, alright, what is it?
So, I can go to Robin later on, if you guys say it's okay, I wanna put a small, long market at my lot over there on one fifty-three, kinda like.
Okay, Lenny, like I said at the beginning.
You were gonna give me some information.
Well, you can go in, okay, and you're in, what is that, you know what the, here's what you gotta find out. What zone is that property in? Is that on Lakeshore or is that?
No, it's not on one fifty-three.
Not on one fifty-three?
It's on one fifty-three.
It's where, it's where his two-story building is.
Yes, yes.
Got a garage, huh?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you call.
It's near a garage, so let's do, I call two stories.
So, so what is it?
What's the septic?
Right, right up the.
It's on Lakeshore. It's on one fifty-three.
Get it away.
Come point out where you are.
What happened to Governor?
No, he's like right, he's Governor Trump. So this is guy, it's one year.
Oh, Governor Trump, yeah, it's right there.
Right, so you're in rural residential.
Okay, is it rural or residential?
No, right there.
No.
No, you're not.
This is the light, you're coming down.
That's down, where's Governor Trump?
Right here.
Oh, so on the other side, now.
So we're driving from the town hall, radio, and then you go light, you can go Governor's Road, you can go by.
Yeah, no, right there.
So, yeah.
Not on rural, is that, is that rural, is that?
Yes, it's rural residential.
Okay, so Lenny, write some notes down.
Not special maintenance.
There you go.
Yeah, Charlie's got a piece of paper.
Charlie's got a piece of paper, okay. So.
Boy, can you print that out, I haven't.
Nope, you can print it out.
You can print, it's right online.
It's right online.
Right online, you have a printer?
Yes, he does.
Oh, I can, I can go online, you know, my phone will be there. What, what's the website?
I'm, I'm only.
Wait a minute.
Middleton dot, no, it's under, it's under the Middleton website.
You ever try to get on that website?
Yes, website, it's his website.
Go over the documents.
It's right there.
Assessing, or probably the zoning planning board, but yes, go ahead, John.
Okay, uh, rural residential, and it talks permitted, okay, now here it's permitted uses. Says single family home, two family home, blah da blah da blah da blah. Uh, setbacks, okay, and then, um.
Commercial, commercial, right here?
Yep, this is, now this is resident, this is B one, okay. B one would be residential, commercial, and life industry. And rural residential, whoops. Rural residential begins on page eight of the old, I believe. Page six, page six.
Where it says article five A?
Yep, uh, article five A, talks about permitted uses in your area, alright, let me read those to you. Now, this is a rural residential district, this is not a commercial district.
I can put this one, I'll just say it was.
Well, if, if it's commercial, you're golden.
The orange area, yeah, I'll put you in Middleton building, pretty much that corner down there and then.
If you're, if you're in commercial, you're good, Lenny, if you're not, you're.
Well, how do I find that out?
Well, Kate can tell you right there, based off of that map, you're not in, you're not in the orange.
It also say on the job bill, if you have.
Yeah, you're not, you just pick it up, you're down here by the lake.
No, more this way.
It don't matter, you're not, you're not all the way up in there, that's.
It says it, or the village.
That's easy way up there.
Because that's the other, you're below the.
You're below.
So you're in the rural.
Do we have a copy of our map on the website? Or?
Okay.
Okay, let me.
All right, so based off of that, go ahead, finish what you were saying.
No, I was just gonna read what, what they, what they. All right, if it is rural residential, okay.
Rural residential.
All right, permitted uses, single-family houses, two-family houses, farms and agricultural operations. Sale of products that are raised, produced, and processed on the premises, provided that seasonal roadside stands must be blah da blah da blah. Essential services, back lots are allowed providing they are five acres. Accessory uses, customary accessory building in uses, home businesses according to Article 36. References signs according to Article 18. Uh, talks about setbacks, special exceptions, provided that they meet the following criteria with the approval of the Board of Adjustment and receive a site plan approval of the Planning Board. Cemeteries, churches, institutions of higher education, group nursery, daycare. Uh, let's see, and they define daycare, police stations, public and parochial schools, contractors' office, offices and storage yard. Okay, um, publicly and privately owned operated parks, playground, golf courses, community recreational centers, including public swimming pools, provided they have frontage on access from a state or town road. Recreational privately owned golf courses, country clubs, semi-public swimming pools, tennis clubs and courts, sport clubs. Convenience or general store, provided the following criteria are met. Max on the size of the store is 1,000 square feet of retail space. Okay, where is that? You're gonna say where is that? That is under Article 5A. You got it? Okay, good. So that, that says, and then it goes into the criteria, no other such store exists with one, one mile, well, you're, you're good there.
Yeah.
And I would suggest that you have food, you know, like hot soup and sandwiches and stuff like that, because you'd make a fortune. You would. Uh, store must be located on the collector or, that's fine, store must have a residential appearance.
Look beautiful. No, what I do is I'm gonna take a ride.
Okay, okay, okay. We've watched that very closely, it's architecturally residential appearance, okay? Screening must be provided in all sizes, there's, there's a bunch of hours of operation, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Parking must be provided according to Article 36. There's all kinds of criteria, how much parking you're supposed to have and so forth and so on, so you got to read all of them. Minimum lot size is two acres.
Oh, I guess I'd have to go with that.
Well, it would, yeah, the only way you, yeah.
All right, there you go.
Oh, oh, really?
I guess it's somewhere in Lake District, he's just out of love.
Well, not because like people.
Is he inside Lake District?
No.
No. But, but the.
No, he is not.
But the ma- ma- minimum lot size is two acres.
Yeah.
The only way you could do that is you know how to do that, right?
I'm gonna ask the parents.
Store, okay, should I stop reading about this? Okay.
I don't follow the criteria, I try to go into the area and they're gonna fly. No, I'm wasting my time.
Well, you were good until the two acres.
Yeah.
Hit the button.
It's a thousand square feet on the bottom.
You would have been great.
Yep. Now, what about putting a food truck in there?
All right, wait a minute, you were on me agenda for a couple of things, we have a lot of things.
Yeah, we have other things to do.
We have to go through all of this stuff right here.
Yeah, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, if you have a question about a food truck, there are two places to look. First, first of all, look at the town ordinances and where are those?
They have them at Crezio's, so I figured it was okay. Or they can.
Well, I don't know if that.
Those are the little traveling ones.
I don't, okay, you, you would check, go to, uh, uh, Kim in the Selects Office there and ask to see the town ordinance.
Yeah.
They're different than zoning ordinance. I think there is a, an ordinance in there, I'm not sure, about, uh.
I want it, I'll let you guys get to your regulatory.
Somebody else had looked into that.
No, that's okay.
Always interesting ones.
Hey, you know, it's a really scary part now.
Thank you. Ma'am, I don't want you to forget.
Don't mess that up, Lenny.
And if you do do a food truck, look into like the state regulations, my understanding that it's pretty rigid.
Pretty rigid.
Well, I see them at Middleton Building.
Yeah, but like the licensing and permitting and all of that is.
They're a free zone, so it might not apply to them.
I don't know.
Well, and those guys just pull up for food to people and take off.
Can't do that, okay.
Okay, cool.
All right, thank you so much.
Good luck, thanks.
Yeah, good luck, thanks. Here, I come down myself.
Thank you. All right. Carl, yes?
Do you guys have any particular questions on any stuff, whatever?
No, I think we got a question. Did you have something?
No, well, I want, sure, because you said we measured the average grade, the top.
The average beat, I changed that.
No, he doesn't want average, he wants top beat. Because average means that.
It could go either, so it could vary.
And that's what we agreed on at the meeting.
Was tall? Okay, I, I did.
There's a lot going on.
There's a lot going on, all right, just before we go anywhere here.
Do you have to open up the hearing?
Let's begin at the beginning and let me get to the ordinance, which that is that. Because that's already in the hands of, let's see here. Okay, so the way this is, this is.
I'm exhausted.
This is warrant article number two. Amendment number two to Lot Standards, Section A, Paragraph Four, adding and delineating where the maximum height of a structure is measured, which is measured from the average finished grade to.
You voted on, or you guys are voting on the highest beat.
And you want to change it to what?
That's the one.
Oh, that's what you want?
Measure from the average to the highest beat.
Average.
I think he was saying average finished grade, which is fine, to the highest beat.
Yeah, that's the way, that's the way we've written it.
Yeah, so it's good.
You're good, you can go home and go to bed.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Carl.
Thanks.
All right, uh, so I hereby open the hearing, uh. We haven't even opened it up yet. No, we didn't. Should have opened it.
Robin, did he open the public hearing?
No.
No.
So.
He can open it now.
No, that's fine.
Let the public speak.
No, I don't think I'm gonna be able to.
All right, no, that's fine, I.
No, no.
You had commented about.
Yeah, I was gonna do it and go, and I forgot to do it.
Because you can't even.
Yes, no, I know you want to do that, I just wanted to get out of there.
Yeah, you make sure you prepare the customers, no one's here.
Oh, we got Kate.
She's an older printer.
I'm not doing anything, I'm just sitting there being.
Being the public.
You are, you are.
She's our public.
Okay, I hereby open the hearing on proposed amendments to the Middleton zoning ordinance.
701.
701.
701. I also hereby open a hearing on, uh, our, our driveway regulations and amendment thereto. Okay. So what I did here is I went through all the ordinances that we changed and I wrote them up on this sheet here as, as they would appear on the ballot.
Okay.
Uh, I also sent copies of the pertaining ordinances along with this, this is, this is the way they're gonna show up on the ballot. To the attorney to review. He reviewed every one except the first two, because we did those without, um, sending those, because we did those last time. This was fences and, uh, something else, I forget what it was, it was, oh, yes. Uh, delineating the maximum height of fences to be 48, that's Article One. Article Two has measured from the average finished grade. Article Three, delineate private campsites, all rescinded entirely. Article Four, uh, family compounds, rescinded entirely. Article Five, are you, okay, this has to do with Article, I'm sorry, Article Five. Article 24A accessory dwellings, this is where he changed a lot of definitions, uh, from, uh, and updated the criteria for approval, and I cited those, Section E, Paragraph One, Two, and 10. Article Six had to do with, um, replacing that, there were, this was personal wireless service facilities, and all he did, remember you talked about special use?
Yeah.
Don't want to use that, you want to use conditional use. So in that particular one, he picked it up, so we deleted and changed any place referenced as special use to replace with conditional use. Warrant Article Seven is Article 33, conditional use permit was rescinded. Section B entirely changed to Sections A, B, and C, if you remember, we eliminated one section.
We did.
Okay. Warrant Article Eight, uh, definitions, we had three changes in definitions, there's, actually there are four. And I have to add another one because I forgot to do it.
Okay.
Um, but I think I marked it someplace.
And it's structure?
Okay, these are definitions, remove campsite, and then make it to conditional use, and then accessory dwell. Scene two to 48, we have 48 inches somewhere else.
It was just the two places.
Just the two places.
We added it into the, um.
It was in the first one, yeah, the first one, uh.
Yeah, the first.
Base, the 5A base zoning district, Section B, maximum height of 48, 48 is 48. Okay.
We were, we, were we not removing fence from, we were removing fence from, uh.
I thought we were just keeping it within the Lake District.
Yes, we just, we just.
No, but I mean, under the definition, I think we were, we were removing.
Uh.
Why don't you go back and see what I can?
Let me see here. We may, no, wait a minute. Uh, which, oh, that was definitions, Article Six, that was in a, that was in a packet called Twenty-seven. Let me see, wait a minute.
Yeah, since removing structural definition.
Yeah, remove fence, so we're not changing, there's no, I don't think there's any height in there, it's just the, when we're removing the word fence out of here.
Uh, let me see, make, make sure I did that right. Where, where is that? Which, which one was it?
It was structure, it was, it was that, we hadn't defined that one, remember, then we said we, that's the one that we have to update in this, or Article Eight. That's saying one of the, one of the definitions, so.
Oh.
Structure, we're just removing the word fence.
Uh, oh, oh, how do you put that in?
That's what we've been doing.
Yeah, that's the one.
Article Thirty-Six, we read.
Yeah, because it says right here, it says, um, whether paved or not fences, flag poles less than 45 feet in height, walls less than 42 inches. We were taking just the word fence out altogether, right?
Yeah, didn't we have in there 42 inches somewhere?
Walls, but it said walls less than.
Okay, so also, okay, I didn't do that, so also, the lead, I think I can have that someplace here.
Because that's just all, it says whether paved or not fences, flag poles less than 45 feet in height, if the walls less than 42 inches in height, which do not include destructive items on the site, we just meant by man's. That's all, I think, though, is just removing that word out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure.
No, no, that's, that's what I should note, too, we're removing from the definitions because.
Just fence, just the word, removing everything else in.
Move the fence, definitely, correct.
All right, thank you.
Move all definitions, just that one.
Yeah.
Ah, I didn't pick, I didn't pick up this part, take out fences right here.
Yeah, that's the only, yeah, and everything else is, can remain as it.
I'll change that tomorrow. Uh, we don't need to vote on it, because Mary voted on it.
Correct, we did.
So, page one.
It's just that we sent it over to.
All right.
We were good on that.
The lead. Okay, any public comment? Okay, uh, Kate, since, since you're the leading person on this roadway change, I got three different, uh.
I sent you three things.
Yeah, you did, so which one is, which one are we gonna admit? This is the one I originally had.
So that's, that's the original.
Original.
Change.
That was original.
And the other piece of paper is.
Is this what he really wants, number five?
That's where it is going to be put in the driveway regulation. You'll see this verbiage under five.
Oh, okay, let me see that.
What is this?
This is, this is.
Uh, may I see this?
Yes, you may.
And let me double check, because there was a.
Here's another one, yeah, three of them.
These are exactly the same thing.
And there's another one right here.
This, which is, this is the same thing. Yeah.
Oh, oh, because when it, oh, all right, this is, this is where in the driveway regulations it's gonna go, it's gonna keep that first sentence and it's gonna go below that.
Yeah, so everything else.
And then the third piece was, it needs to be changed under number 20, so it cascades through the.
All right, now wait a minute, I'll look at that. Okay, so this is amend to G and. Original, okay, yeah.
You got us, yeah.
And then what about number, what about, uh, where's it gonna go, number 10?
20, right here. It should say 10 feet.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
First of all, two motions, motion to, uh, and the verbiage, the road agent provided to, in.
Okay, so make a motion to add verbiage to the driveway regulation added by the, recommended by the road agent.
Yeah, just, that's just where it's gonna go on the thing.
Well, you have, no, we have, we'll, we'll put, we'll put this in per.
So I made that motion along with.
And number five.
Driveway regulation.
Yes, driveway regulation.
Yeah.
And.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, yeah, somebody, is there another?
I'll second it.
Okay, any, any discussion? Okay.
So this is a new, this is another one, this one, is this one we voted on at the ballot, or is this one?
No, no, we're right here, right here.
Okay.
It's done.
It's done, yeah.
Unless the public wants to.
Unless the public wants to, and, and nobody's here, so I'm gonna.
I want this to be done yesterday.
Do you have any comment?
Yes, we want to send yesterday.
And then amend, uh, number 20 in the driveway reg, reg. Last sentence to say a minimum of 10 feet in length back.
Right, so make the motion.
I'll write these up for you.
Make the motion to amend the last piece of the reg.
Item twenty.
Item twenty to 10 feet.
What's 10 feet, the driveway itself, or the?
Ten feet.
Oh, that, okay, that's what it is.
Unless we, but, wait.
It's, yes, it was six, sixteen.
The 10, okay, I'll second it.
Any discussion? Any public comment?
I just go.
Get it done.
So motion to change item 20 to 10 feet.
Yes.
To change the item, change it from the, where it says 20 feet to 10 feet.
No, it says.
Six feet.
Six feet.
From six feet to 10 feet.
To change it from, so some, number 20 to change from six feet to 10.
Yep.
Yes, thank you. Do you want it for your row? Do you want it?
Yeah.
All right, I'll be next. Well, right, yeah.
Feet and length back from the connection to the edge of the road.
Thank you.
All right.
Did we vote?
I seconded.
In all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion period. Oh, so let's talk about this last one here.
The last.
99, we can get to that one.
Oh, that, okay, what do you, he just took out implementing on the.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Yeah, uh, 44, uh, these are like edit changes and so forth.
No, I just.
Yeah, no, you're right, you're right. So the title can be deleted, implementing, and you just, you just leave it's open, space for expansion. And delete the phrases required by a special.
Is it summary acceptable, understanding of what we done, because six months to it, it's acceptable, summary.
You're asking me, as far as I'm concerned, it's acceptable.
Well, I just, you know, is it quick all the way down?
So this, this is what's gonna be on the ballot, and what's gonna be on, but go off, what we will, available will be.
Not with a comment, but I, I have highlighted the chi.
Yeah, no, I understand that, that it seems like a lot of work, but it's one page. If we just said that this is what we're doing, even if it's on the ballot, it's.
Press contact me if you have any questions.
It's a little what?
Digestive.
Okay, John, one of the things you have, if, if you want to put the ordinance in full.
Yep, no, I don't want to put the ordinance in full.
Okay, so I tried to summarize what we were doing.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the board sees that as acceptable, as something that the voters could read and digest, if they have a question, they can back it.
Okay, my comment to that is yes.
Yes, yes, I would agree.
I mean, I must say, put it on TikTok or with the grinder or anything else, say, this is.
And I'm doing the best I can to summarize what is in it.
Yeah, no?
Yeah.
And trying to keep it as brief, now, I did ask the attorney, is there any way, is there any comments, additions, or any way to shorten it up? Right?
This is, I think this is pretty short.
So in some, when I was in Mass, um, the town that I lived in, the, written like the warrant articles would write, it would say like, yes means to change, and then no means to like keep it the, so it would be like for the family compound, it would be like, yes means to eliminate family compound, and no means to keep family.
Well, I, I wrote these as were written last year on our ordinances about the three ordinances we had, and I asked a question.
And it is a fairly straightforward, are you in favor of this?
Yes, are you in favor of this?
There's no, no more difficulty.
Yeah, I mean, you're not gonna, you're not gonna please everybody, and it does take a little bit of effort to.
No, and he's already done the work, and this is.
I think it's, I think it's fine the way it is.
Oh.
So did we approve the driveway regulation by vote, and did you get that?
Uh, yes, yes.
Because I was talking to you, and I just wanted to make sure.
Well, I think Julie wrote, and she, she leaned down and she wrote. Well, I think Julie voted, and she, she leaned down and she wrote.
All right.
Yeah, we said every...
And we got it on, we got it recorded.
He's got a million bad jokes.
Okay.
Okay, yes, I think this is acceptable.
I think it's acceptable.
John, good question.
I'm trying to make it, you can never say yes.
I tried to do it in the way that I could understand it, and that some of it's a little wonky, but some of the changes are all over the place, so I did this.
But people are going to ask, what does this mean? It's like, this has been available.
Nobody's told us, yeah.
Or, and we'll have it on the page, website, saying, these are the ordinances, you know, people, these are the things that we vote on.
Okay, I hereby close the hearing on driveway regulations seven sixteen. I hereby close the hearing on zoning amendments, uh, seven seventeen, how's that?
Good job.
Uh, looks like we do not have to hold another meeting next week.
You know, I want to let you know, I came to the town hall last night, like, at ten minutes of six, and I'm like, there's nobody here, and then I realized, oh, that's next Wednesday.
Oh, you're like me.
I'm like, tomorrow night is six, I didn't know what week it was, I'm like, well, I had five o'clock, I had five thirty, and then I had the six o'clock.
I am so glad I'm not the only one that does that.
You know, there's a thing called calendar, it goes range.
I just, you know why that is, because we're both getting older, that's what it is.
You didn't put on leaves.
No, you both got a lot to do, that's what it is.
Well, this, and this, this is the typical meeting night we would meet anyways, right? So, it's, that's ingrained in me, but it's when we add these extra meetings in that throw me off, and I'm like...
That's why we should put it on a Friday night, because we'll never forget.
No, no way.
And we're going to cancel the next one, I'm going to take down the...
The Wednesday.
And break the calendar.
Well, put it out to some other board that needs it.
That's right. I have two questions.
Are, do you want to be on the day I take one?
Oh, I don't see why not.
Okay, I'm just saying.
Go ahead.
So one is, is it possible to take and put, you know, the zoning map that has, like, the different colors to say this, is it possible to add that into our zoning ordinances, so it's like...
The zoning ordinance says should be made available, right, Kate?
By law, I think that zoning map is supposed to be held in record of the new municipal buildings. So we need, we're in the process of ordering one. So, but yeah, obviously, everybody, you can, you can make your own copies.
Yeah.
Well, and I was just wondering, like, if it was possible to, like, add it to...
Yeah, we can, we can get a copy and sell it.
You mean add it to the ordinance?
No, just add it, add it into your bookie and show it, so when you, somebody says, oh, I live, you'd be like, well...
Like, so we don't go through this of like...
Like, I mean, like, given like, I know what you're going to say.
They can actually call us on that, you know, but not having it available.
Well, we have, no, no, we don't have it available, and we're not moving over there. Well, that's, that's up to you guys later.
Well, and, and then eventually, like, have it posted on, I don't know, I don't, I couldn't find it on the website either.
It is.
Is it?
That's where I printed it out.
Okay, I couldn't, I was looking, and I couldn't...
Again, you got to make it easy.
Yeah, one of the, one of the, I don't want to hold everybody up.
No.
One of the things that I...
We got all kinds of time, tonight's only twelve past seven.
No, we started at six, you know. One of the things that I'm going to recommend that the boards do, uh, next year, besides continuing doing the ordinance updates and so forth. By the way, our, our budget, I digress, our contract for this, uh, the Strackard Regional, I thought was well money, well spent.
Good, I agree.
We have, we just got a bill for two thousand dollars, and we have about seven hundred dollars left on that contract, which isn't a lot of hours, it's about nine dollars an hour. So I would, I would utilize him, uh, whatever time he needs to do, whatever he needs to do between now and June on ordinances, remember we talked about we want to get it to setback, that's a big, that's a big job. But, uh, to coincide with your GIS stuff that you're looking at.
Yeah.
We, as a board, like you said, John, we need to make stuff more readily available for the public to look at, like zoning boards, our watersheds, all that kind of stuff, and they're not there. We have to go upstairs and dig them up.
It would just be nice to be able to, like, pull up those maps and say...
Online links and hard copies, again, biggie.
That's going to take some work to do. And it's not difficult, because it's all there, it's just a matter of what kind of format you're going to put it in, how do you keep it, who keeps it, what, what entails all?
Well, we'll see, for CAI, a warrant article goes through, because that, everything's right there. Yeah, so, yeah, so a warrant article is three foot four, and so we'll see what happens, and after that...
Yeah, we'll see what's on there, there may be some stuff on there.
That's super, that is like, that's easy, and I just, you know, let me see.
You can also, if they're, if they want to see, uh, our aquifer, isn't that on the Strackard Regional?
It's on there, yeah.
So what you could do is say, okay, you want to look at the aquifer zone, link it directly to Strackard Regional, you could do that.
Yeah.
We could do that.
Yeah, that's...
We should have that.
Yeah, we should, yeah.
Should pull, the way everyone...
But that type of stuff, and, and for example, the watershed, the watershed, uh, you should be able to link it, you should be able to link. That will involve Tim to get how to do that, uh, and make it as easy to do for whoever sits over there. So it doesn't swamp her then.
Yeah, no.
You're absolutely right.
So...
Easy for both.
I did have a question, it's going back to the, um, family compound, sorry to revisit it, but I did have... Where is, why, why is it, why do they put it on the planning board, where is it written that they need to do that? If you don't go offhand, it's not, if you do offhand, it's not, if you want to, you struggle.
I think it is.
It says the last planning board digit, we, family compound on the silver screen, we asked them to put it right.
That's site regulation, that's what that was, that's why you did that. I was wondering why he came here tonight, I don't know where the regulation requires it.
It's not a regulation, he was, he was just getting clarification, but I think it's good that they have original occupation. That way...
No, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I just don't know what's required.
I don't necessarily know that it says that it's required, but I think it's, it's good practice, and hopefully, well, if it is...
Hopefully, it'll last too, yeah, because that regular, that family compound thing is crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Those types of, those type of things, and not having, even in the, because you know what?
It's a conversational thing, that's why.
Yeah, it doesn't say you have to come, it doesn't even say you have to state it.
I think, I think the board should get any slates.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's good practice.
I think his question was, how can I put three houses on my lot?
Yeah, well, the question, without spending money for a survey, and what I was trying to say, well, if you subdivide it down the road, you're going to have to serve it, he's saying to his mind, he'll be dead.
Well, I talked to him about this, said, may not be a problem now, but in thirty to sixty years, might be.
He doesn't care, he knows it's going to be a problem, he doesn't care. We're all going to be known.
But Kate, I think that's why he was here.
That's fine, it wasn't because of states and the regulations, we said you have to help, it wasn't, I'm just trying to get it in my mind, I don't care, I think it was great, it was always my fault.
I suggest it.
All right, well, that's fine.
I think this is where I got the idea that they had to put something somewhere, a notification is, it's the interpretation of way that, the way this is written. This has to do with, when the, this has to do with, uh, when the title is vested in two or more persons, either directly or through the relationship between the vested interests or holders, of the vested interests shall provide a statement to the town reciting the nature of the familiar relationship between the vested interests signed by the holder of each vested interest. So you could interpret, and does that, does that mean?
Well, it says shall provide a statement.
You have to certify that you're married, and provide a marriage certificate, but I...
I draw the line.
No, but I mean, but I mean, that's why I...
No, it's good practice, I...
My thing is, is like, I, I, I believe we should require an affidavit signed by the people who are living in those houses, that they're not paying any rent and they're related.
I agree with you, yeah, but it's not, it doesn't say that.
It's in the affidavit, it doesn't say we don't, we don't, it doesn't say we can't, it doesn't appear.
If they don't vote it up, then we probably should pursue that.
Yes, we should.
Adding it to the regulations.
We should add also that, that as a family compound should be noted in the...
No, but it says the requirement.
Just vote no for that.
What did you say?
I said, if it's, if it's turned down, which most people, I don't know what they'll do, I won't go here.
They were, what's a family compound, that's what they say.
Yeah, what...
It's totally what the voting was.
So if, if it stood, there would be some changes, notification should be in the deed, because then the nine eleven thing wouldn't have occurred.
Right.
Yeah.
If somebody looked at it.
If somebody looked at it, yes.
And then the second question is, his two houses should be on his tax card, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every building, every building.
Because I have that question about that, are they taxed differently? No, they're taxed, there's three different structures.
That's fine, does it say family compound with them?
No.
That's it.
Would it?
I, I mean, I spoke to him last week, I guess.
In the description or something?
Yeah, right, because it, yes, it has an impact based off of what these ordinances are.
What do we do with a home business? Do we designate a home business somewhere, that it's a home business?
People don't come in and apply, well, I think the home businesses would probably have in this town, but we only, probably have only recognized ten.
Um, we can Google, and you'll see where all the businesses in town are.
I'm going to make a motion that we accept the minutes from January ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Oh, thank you.
I'll second that.
I don't want that to get lost.
No, I'm sorry, yes. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now...
This is on your agenda?
Oh. With the way the warrant art, so say if the, like, the campsite one gets rescinded, and we no longer have that, the people that are doing that now, they have to be stuck.
Well, oh, that's a good question.
So, because...
If that's not allowed...
I was speaking to an attorney about that, and she, well, and I told her...
She said you could keep them, right?
She said, well, depending on how it's written, she's like, just make sure, because the people that are currently doing it may be able to continue to do it, so if the intention is, is that there's no longer campsites allowed, we need to make sure that it's done in a way that, or written in a way that it's like, it's done, it's not allowed at all, like, no basses. Look, you can't...
So that's a good question, maybe to ask.
Are there supposed to be campsites now? I thought there weren't supposed to be in Hannibal.
Oh, we have, we have an ordinance in here that, I think a lot of you have.
In certain...
I think, I think Blair mentioned something to that effect, we had Roxanne, too. It got rather complicated, we still haven't, but you changed it, but I will, uh...
Yeah, because what's the, what's the ultimate intent, right, is to get rid of them all together.
Because we don't want them.
So if that's the intent, and that's the goal forward, then that means, that means to say, anything that's in place in one is, can no longer seem to be one.
Don't cancel.
Don't cancel them.
I was just going to say, I think we have to, I was hoping this would be the answer, and we could have to go back, but I just, I thought, because I was talking to her today, and she had said, I'm sorry, Roxanne, but you know, it's, uh, but she had said, you know, make sure, she says, because anybody who's doing it now might be able to continue to do it, so we have to find out if moving forward, and then you have to deal with the people of like, oh, I've been doing this for twenty years, that...
I don't care.
You know.
Don't care.
Right, no, I, I...
I'm sorry, I heard that, well, we've always been doing it this way, well, there's a new sheriff in town, you're not going to do it anymore.
That's how I feel, but I don't...
Well, it's the same as when, you know, you go in, you got any...
Oh, I'm just looking for a pen.
Oh.
I have some extra.
Can you go right here?
You can get it up there. I ran up there.
Uh, no, I'm going to work with you.
I don't know, we can get one.
So is that another one that you're going to refresh?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask them about that one. Okay, there you go. Budget review, uh, I, I just talked about that, no, we have nothing else. Members' comments, I made my comments, I, I am, my, if we don't have to meet next week about changing language on the, on the, uh... Yeah, we, we can, we can vote, it, it's listed as a hearing, right?
Correct.
So we can vote on it before they call a hearing, or call a hearing, then vote on it. Make the change, present the change, if we had to make the change, have a hearing, close the hearing, vote.
Okay.
Is that okay to him?
Yeah, I don't want to vote anyway.
No, it does, it works.
Well, it's something you just show up.
No, that does work.
That does work.
You're sad about it.
Because you close your hearing, and then you can address it in the board, and then you're done, yeah, yeah.
All right, so, uh...
So if that's the case, but I mean, so our next meeting technically would be until February thirteenth.
Correct.
Are you here?
I'm here.
Oh, yeah.
When do you go?
When do you leave?
Uh, February twenty-seventh.
Oh, that's right, because Jack is supposed to be in chocolate, February thirteenth.
That's right. Dark chocolate.
So yellow is supposed to be dark chocolate, Christine, I remember that, because I said February thirteenth, make sure you bring candy.
I was thinking about it the other day when I was looking for a piece of chocolate, but that was...
What's he doing on the thirteenth?
He's bringing back, Kate, why is Jack bringing back?
He's got the plan, and he's got...
I bet I don't get dark chocolate.
I'm shocked, yeah.
If you're going to eat chocolate, that's always, you need seventy-six.
You're going to have milk and chocolate.
Seventy-six cocoa and up.
I know. I like that. So, oh, okay, so, oh, so you...
I, I can help if I can, I've often been helped, heard, but...
So you're on your way out.
I get it.
We still have to accept your resignation.
I don't care, if that show up.
Yeah.
I'll try that.
But, but...
We'll see, we'll just have the meetings down at your house.
Yeah, I can provide alcoholic beverages, too.
That, everybody will be showing up for the meetings then.
Wine, beer.
We'll get more volunteers that way.
That's right.
Yeah, all right, well, given that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn at seven thirty-one.
I'll second.
Poor Robin, though, we just...
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, before you go...